Welcome to the October 16, 2024, regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I am Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Bird.
Present.
Freeman.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Corbin. Sol.
Here.
Rowan.
Present.
Shay. Schulteis.
Present.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting first with an opening prayer, as we've done for many years, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us.
I've been praying today and ask that you join me in prayer today. Father, first of all, we come to you thanking you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the change of the season where we transitioned from summer to fall, enjoying the crisp weather and sometimes to cold. We thank you for regardless. Thank you for the opportunity to deliberate over the, over the city, over the oppor- and the opportunity to deliver what our community has desired from us. Thank you for this room being filled with community members. Thank you for connecting people during this time. Right now, we are in election season and sometimes those lines are drawn and people don't veer over to the other side because of a party that they may choose or a party that others may choose. So in this election season, Father, I ask that you bring a unity to this community, to the state, to this country, Lord. Far too many times, we let a party line divide us. And so, I'm asking for unity in this country. In Jesus' mighty name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bird, and my apologies for not introducing you prior to the prayer. I forgot to do that. Next item on the agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and have been reviewed by council as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda, and then it'll be placed on its right, on the regular agenda in its regular order. But before I ask that, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
For A, excuse the absences of council members Corbin and Shay. For B, approve the minutes of the October 2, 2024, regular meeting. For C, from Board of Public Works, a grant of utility easement for a housing development at 717 East 24th Street. For D, from Board of Public Works, an amended and restated White Axe power purchase commitment authorization. For E, from the Board of Public Works, a budget amendment and change order for the Lake Makatawa Transmission Main Rehabilitation. For F, from the Board of Public Works, 17th Street Lift Station Rehabilitation Construction Services and Project Budget Increase. For G, approve the Master Plan Map Amendment for Distribution and Comment. For H, refer claims filed against the city. For I, award the bid for transportation building trench drain replacement. For J, award the bid for South Washington and Michigan Avenue Corridor Plan. For K, approve the purchase and installation of a rooftop heating unit for Building 2 on the Parks and Recreation Campus. For L, authorize the submission of a grant application for playground equipment for Holland Heights and Water Tower Parks. For M, accept the Rural and Non-Metro Election Infrastructure Grant and the Physical Security and Election Resiliency Grant. For N, from Finance, accept the Quarterly Investment Report. For O, declare items as surplus for police operations bicycles. For P, accept a grant for the 2024 Bureau of Justice Assistance Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant. For Q, a reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority Board. And for R, accept the Fiscal Year 2025 Strategic Plan and Business Plan Quarterly Progress Report for July to September 2024.
Thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve. Agenda as presented.
Moved by Sol, do we have a second, Mr. Freeman? Second by Freeman, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Bird.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the State of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for the public to be able to address council not only at our regular meetings but also at our special meetings, or excuse me, at our study sessions, but also at every board committee and commission meetings. There's the opportunity to be able to address all of them as well. This gives you the opportunity to be able to talk about whatever you think is important. It is one-way communication. We don't answer questions at this time or engage in discussion, but if there's a question that staff can answer, they may be able to circle around with you after the meeting or in the following day. We ask that you approach the podium. Please state your name and municipality for the record, and we ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. There are three lights on the dais in front of me to help you out. There's a green light, which means you're doing well on time. There's a yellow light, which means you have one minute left, and a red light that means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. When you're, if you would like to speak, please approach the podium, and if you're, anyone here would like to speak, please come forward now. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
I'm Judge Bellargen. I'm the Chief District Court Judge in Alligan County, and for Audubon County purposes, I'm the Circuit and District Court Judge for the West Michigan Regional Veterans Treatment Court. And specifically in regard to the Veterans Court, last time I was here, I was explaining to you that we were going to be having a graduation that would be taking place in the Judge Knoll's courtroom here in Holland, and that went wonderfully. I'm not sure if any of you were able to make it for that. I hope so. If not, I'm sure I'll have other graduations coming forward that they'll be, you'll be able to appear for and just witness that process. The video of our 50th graduate is still on our website, so if anyone does have an interest in watching that, it took place in December, and that was in Judge Brickley's courtroom in, in Pawpaw. The reason I'm here today is, well, I'd like to say vote for me, but actually, it's, you're not in my jurisdiction, so you can't vote for me, and I don't have an opponent, so I'm hoping I win on that one. I am here to urge you to consider Emily Jip for the Circuit Court Judge of Alligan County. Those portions of the city of Holland that were, are within the county of Alligan are, I think, our largest population center for Alligan, and I think it's really important to get the right individual for that Circuit Court position. And there's a lot of talk about the other individual running, having experience in all the different areas, but actually Emily has actually practiced in all of those areas, not just simply taking a study course or doing volunteer work during law school. We're talking about people that actually represent individuals in each of these lines of work. I'm not trying to denigrate anyone, I'm just trying to say that the actual experience level that Emily brings to the table is far greater than the other individual, but I, you know, I always feel uncomfortable telling people who to vote for, but I would certainly like to encourage people to thoughtfully consider this individual because she is such a, I think, a remarkable character. And being a judge, I think I'm going to startle you all by saying, I'm going to stop before my time is up. Unless anyone has any questions, but you said that's, that's not going to be happening. So, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate you letting me speak to you here today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Hendrickson, Zeeland. It is a pleasure again to see the students and their parents here tonight and having them active in government and that you would permit that and guide them along to see. I remember as a high school student, being involved for a week at Girls Town in Columbus, Ohio. And that really brought me an interest to understand how important our government is and then how it runs and what, how much effort it takes for a council and the things that you manage, so I'm glad they're here. I'm here as an advocate for religious freedom, and there was an ordinance in 2020 that admitted into the anti-discrimination a lot of different people groups, and one of them predominantly was sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Since then, the laws have slightly changed with the Lemon Law being cast out by null and void to separation of church and state. So all of those different classifications in the anti-discrimination law that you passed also applies to all those other people groups, for instance, orientation, identity, and expression. So every student in high school has that opportunity to be orientated, identify for their religious freedom and to express. So I'm glad the students are here. It's a time very different for them to grow up in and to see the action, especially now since Title IX, 2024, is now under an injunction. I don't know what the high schools are doing here in Holland, but the surrounding areas are really struggling with this, that boys will be permitted according to this new Title IX definition, boys in girls' restrooms and in girls' sports. So it is something these young people will see you grappling with as well in the community and the schools they attend. So I'm glad they're here to see this and see how support works and how to stand up for their rights. So many people think that an LGBT, LGBT person has a difficult time in high school or elementary or whatever else, but they also now need to take into consideration it's very difficult to have a religious conviction and have teachers, administrators, fellow students have a difficult time with their expression, identity, and orientation. Stand strong, students, for what you believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And Brenda, I'd like to note for the record that Mr. Corbin joined us at 6:11 PM this evening.
So noted.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Special Presentations and Recognitions from the Mayor or Council or City Manager. The Holland Youth Advisory Council, HIAC. Introduction, Appointments and Reappointments to Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Mr. Van Beek, it's one of my favorite nights of the year.
It is a good night, Mr. Mayor, Council, those who are joining us tonight, and especially students, and I see a lot of parents here too that I'm sure are proud. This is a fun night because it kicks off a full year where we get to see a lot of these students more often, sometimes joining us at study sessions, but certainly as a lot of you are liaisons or appointed to different boards, committees, and commissions, and we get to see these great faces at those meetings also. So I believe that Esther Fafowski is the Director of this department, and she always likes to say, "Don't, don't recognize me as Keith," but Esther does a fantastic job. And tonight, though, Joan McCluskey is our point person that does fantastic work, and I think the HIAC students really enjoy and love Joan, so thank you, Joan, for the work that you do. But I'm going to hand it off, and I bet that Joan even said, "I'm not talking tonight because the students are going to do the work." So I'm going to hand it off to whatever students that are going to present and introduce us to our fantastic HIAC students this year.
Hello, so my name is Yaslen Ochoa. I'm a junior at Holland High, and it is my pleasure to introduce Holland scholars joining the Holland Youth Advisory Council for the 2024-2025 academic year. So for the Holland Youth Advisory Core Council, we have Greta Bass from Black River High School, Ice Badran from West Ottawa High School, myself from Holland High School, and we're all reappointments. And then for newcomers, we have Abby Bass from Holland Christian High School, Drew Rothstein from West Ottawa High School, Henrik Baumann, Black River High School, Karina Martinez, Holland High School, Leila Sundarajan, Sundarajan from Holland High School, Maggie Telgenhoff from Holland High School, Nikki Markovic from West Ottawa High School, Owen Stimmer from Black River High School, and Ruby Van Heist from Holland High School. And then for Social Services Committee, we have Ruie Van Heist from Holland High School, Anders Travers from West Ottawa High School, Gio Salinas from West Ottawa High School, Hannah Tenorio from West Ottawa High School, Jori Piersma from West Ottawa High School, Luke Tusing from West Ottawa High School, Maggie Rothstein from West Ottawa High School, Maria Lee from Zeeland West High School, Molly Huggett from Holland High School, and Toya Murphy from West Ottawa High School.
Good evening, my name is Abby Bass. For our Recreation Committee members, we have Isaac Hagemeyer, who's homeschooled, June McDonald from Black River High School, Karina Martinez from Holland High School, Kailina Zane Hachek from West Ottawa High School, Carlos Sanchez de la Cruz from Holland High School, Corbin White from West Ottawa High School, Margaret Kuhn from Black River High School, Regina Gomez-Tomás from Holland High School, Simon Orange Shortz from Holland High School, Sarah Gonzalez from Holland High School. And for our Environmental Committee members, we have Ben Flatter from Holland High School, Ella Saint Pe- Ellie Saint Pedro from Black River High School, Owen Steimer from West Ottawa High School, TJ Vandemir from Zeeland West High School, Andrew Legg from Holland High School, Ellie Steimer from Black River High School, Joseph Lay from Zeeland West High School, Miley Knapp from Black River High School, Miles Wilkinson from West Ottawa High School, Noah Pertan from Holland Christian High School, and Yamalet Collin from Black River High School.
And lastly, we have our youth on boards for this year. So we have Ice Badron from West Ottawa High School, Sydney O'Heddes from Zeeland West High School, Yaslen Ochoa from Holland High School, Abby Bass from Holland Christian High School, Anne Chung from Black River High School, Anno Manguiro from Holland High School, Boston Wilkinson from West Ottawa High School, Drew Rothstein from West Ottawa High School, Henrik Baumann from Black River High School, Kai Garcia from Black River High School, Leila Sundar Rajan from Holland High School, Lily Mendoza from Zeeland West High School, Luke Orange Shortz from Holland High School, Maggie Telgenhoff from Holland High School, Nikki Markovic from West Ottawa High School, Niall Leonard from West Ottawa High School, and myself, Greta Bass, from Black River High School. Thank you. Please join me in welcoming our 2024-25 Holland Youth Advisory Council and Holland Youth and Boards.
Well, let me be the first to welcome all of you. I see a lot of familiar faces, I see a lot of new faces. We are very excited to have you join us at our study sessions. As I say, when you, when you do join us, please speak up at the meetings. We love to hear your opinions, we love to have your questions about what's going on. Also, please do participate when you're at a board, committee, or commission meetings. Those boards love to hear your opinions as well. Fabulous job, ladies, this evening. It's very, we know that it can be scary and a little bit difficult to get up to that podium, and I'm still, I've been doing this for five years. I'm still waiting for the meeting where I don't stumble over my words at some point. So fabulous job, we cannot wait to be working with you guys this year. Wonderful. And it is my understanding that you're going to have a reception right now so you don't have to sit through the rest of our meeting, although we do have five public hearings. So if you'd like to sit through the five public hearings, you are more than welcome to stay for that. But if you do want to go to that reception, which is not going to be nearly as exciting as our meeting, but if you do want to go to that reception, we'll give you a few minutes to go head out there. It's going to be right out in the, right out in the lobby outside. We'll give you a few minutes to do that before we continue on with the meeting. So thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you guys. We, we, don't leave yet, I got, thank you, Mr. Freeman. We haven't acted to appoint you guys yet. What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item? I got so excited.
We have moved to approve the appointments and reappointments for the Youth Advisory Board.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Bird, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now you can go to your reception. Congratulations. See, I told you it's been five years, I haven't done this right yet. All right, let's, let's move on. Let's keep moving this on to Special Order of the Day, Public Hearings. Item 7A, Downtown Principal Shopping District Assessment, Adopt a Resolution Approving the Fiscal Year 2025 Downtown Holland Principal Shopping District Assessment Role. Mr. Van Beek.
Mr. Mayor, Council, members of the public. So this is an interesting process. So I'm, just let me introduce the next three items that are on the agenda. In particular, so anyone that's here that wants to hear information or speak on it absolutely has that possibility, but if people are watching from home, this is a three-step process. It's putting it on the agenda, it's explaining it the first time, it's saying that there's the necessity to do this, and then tonight is actually adopting the resolution that approves these assessment roles. We've explained this to council every year for many, many years, and it's the same process every year. And we explained this from a staffing perspective the first time that this was presented to you. So we'd be happy to, I'm sure Karen Jeff would be happy to go through that presentation again for any of you or for anyone from the public, but I'm also kind of getting the sense that basically what we're doing in these three different areas is for the Principal Shopping District Assessment is allowing that board that's appointed by you that has made a unanimous recommendation to you to assess them money to provide additional services that the rest of the city then doesn't pay for. And the same is true for the snowmelt operations and maintenance. And then with the downtown parking operation and maintenance, the same is true. And basically, global picture is that the businesses and the property owners and the residents downtown basically choose to assess them for the extra amenities that are present downtown. So I will defer a little bit to notices or hand raising or anything again on any of these. Happy to make a longer presentation on the specific items, but otherwise, Mayor, maybe what I'm suggesting is introducing and then hold the public hearing, and then you have a recommended motion in front of you that then on each of those three separate items would follow through on assessing that role to the property owners as, as outlined.
I, I think that makes sense, and if council has questions, we'll have the opportunity after the motion is made that council can, in discussion, raise those questions on each one of these because we have had presentations on each of these items in prior meetings. So very first item then, 7A, Downtown Principal Shopping District Assessment, Adopt a Resolution Approving the Fiscal Year Downtown Holland Principal Shopping District Assessment Role. I will open that for a public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council on that item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 7A?
Move to approve the assessment as presented.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Sol, any discussion? Yes, Ms. Raymond.
I, I don't know if you said this, Keith, but how, how is it that the business owners are informed of the increase? And, and we usually, like, we've gotten letters before from people who had questions about it. Obviously, there wasn't anything this year, just wondering.
Yeah, thank you, very good question, and on all of these, because it's an assessment role. It's part of the process that we notify them that this process is happening. We notify them of what the specific assessment is in those different areas, explain the process, the opportunities for input, and really, the first opportunity for input is to call the affected office and the affected staff member to have a conversation. And I would say, not every year, but some years, you might have a new resident or a new property owner, which we view as a great opportunity to just explain, you know, this is not a common process that everybody knows about. But I think it's very well communicated, both very legally and informally, so I think there's a lot of opportunity for input. And again, as I said, the boards that oversee this made those recommendations unanimously, and there's been a couple opportunities here, and at least for the first one, no one had public comment.
Mr. Freeman.
And just to clarify, is the footprint different than it has been in previous years because of all the expansion that's taken place?
You are correct, Mr. Freeman. As it relates to the Principal Shopping District, and you can see the map in front of you, there was some changes with that that's outlined in the presentation, but primarily as we take a look at the improvements that the city and the BPW made on Sixth Street and the eagerness that we're awaiting the ice rink and kind of the new development that we expect that to spur. The decision was made, and this involves expanding that Principal Shopping District to include some of those properties.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Freeman.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. I will now open a public hearing on item 7B, the Downtown Snowmelt Operations and Maintenance Assessment to adopt a resolution approving the annual Downtown Snowmelt Operations and Maintenance Assessment Role. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address council on this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 7B?
Move to approve Downtown Snowmelt Operations and Maintenance Assessment, Adopt a Resolution Approving the Annual Downtown Snowmelt Operations and Maintenance Assessment Role.
Moved by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Schulteis, any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Raymond.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Schulteis.
Yes.
Bird.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. I now open a public hearing on item 7C, the Downtown Parking Operations and Maintenance Assessment, Adopt a Resolution Approving the Annual Downtown Parking Operations and Maintenance Role. Is there any member of parking operations and maintenance role. Is there any member of the public who would like to address council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 7C?
Moved to approve item 7C on the agenda.
Moved by Byrd. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Soul. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Schultheis?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 7D, community and neighborhood services, ATC Drive Train, a PA 198 tax abatement request. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And I will just wrap up if I can take the, the liberty just to thank the downtown businesses and property owners and residents that do make this choice. For example, on the last item, parking is free to all of us, but parking is not free, is it? So that's just an example of them choosing to pay for something that the rest of us get to enjoy. So thank you to that. We now have a couple PA 198 tax abatement requests. And I keep saying more at the beginning of these, and I'm gonna stop doing that. And I'm just gonna hand it off to Mark Myers. So you get to hear him talk and me talk less, which you're probably most appreciative of. So Mark will describe each of these. And also, we have representatives from the company that we're thankful are here and are investing in our community.
Thank you, Keith. We do such a good job. And I know old habits are hard to, to break. So thank you, Keith. Thank you, Mayor and council. Very pleased tonight to present on two additional industrial expansions. I've been here now 12 months, and this is number seven and eight over 12 months. So our industries are growing, and they're creating jobs and investments. So first, I have ATC Drive Train. They've applied for a tax abatement for their facility at 1285 Waverly Road. ATC Drive Train is a global remanufacturer of powertrain and drivetrain solutions for light to heavy duty vehicles, independent of technology. So they work on EVs. They also work on internal combustion engines, vehicles. So they have three plants in three US states. They also are in three foreign countries. So they're a very large company. They've been around 85 years, I think. This investment is almost $2.5 million. It's to expand into 32,000 square feet, additional square footage in a spec building that they currently operate from. It will accommodate battery remanufacturing and electrical drive units, some warehousing, as well as distribution. The expected job creation is 72 new jobs, a very significant increase in jobs. The term of the abatement would be nine years, and that's based on the balance of their lease agreement. They could come back to get up to 12 years if they extend the lease at the end. I will mention that I had the pleasure of touring the facility, and it was very cool. It was neat to see EV battery, car batteries split in half, the clamshell split in half. And then the, is it packs?
Joe?
Packs. There's 12 packs in each. And there's, you know, lots of wires, of course, and there's cooling. And anyway, very, very interesting technology. And they're also going to be doing recycling of the materials within EV batteries. So with that, I will close. I'll mention that both Ryan Ferrier from Lake Shore Advantage, who helped work on this IFT, is here tonight to answer any questions you may have. And then Joe McKeever is the plant manager who gave Ryan and I a tour of the facility. So with that, I'll leave you to open the public hearing.
Any, any questions for staff? I, I just have one. I don't know if you've got this in front of you. ATC was in front of us a couple of years ago. Do you remember how long ago that was, Mark? It was before your time, and congratulations on one year.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know it was before your time.
I'm, I'm gonna defer to, to Keith or Ryan. It, they have three.
They have three PA 198s right now?
No, they have three other units.
Okay.
I think it was the spec building that they're in, the initial.
Okay.
Yeah. Three, four years ago.
Yeah, they were, they were in the process of acquiring space at that time. And once they established a customer, then they grew over those three.
Okay, I know it was during my tenure as mayor that, that there was one already. Okay. All right. Any other questions from, for staff? All right, great. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it.
You bet.
I will now open a public hearing on the PA 198 tax abatement request for ATC Drive Train. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address council in regard to this item? If so, please come up to the podium. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 7D?
Moved to approve the ATC Drive Train tax abatement request.
Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. Any discussion?
I have a question for the applicant.
Yes. Yep, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Joe McKeever. I live in Allegan County.
So I was wondering, thank you, you, the 72 full-time jobs, I'm wondering about the skill set in this area for the positions that you've listed here. What's your strategy for recruiting? And do you feel like there's a, there's a good source for these positions?
Yes, strategy for basically looking for additional employees. We're looking through temp services. Obviously, we're doing temp to hire. We're doing direct to hire. We're a very technology company. So we're looking for engineering, software development, manufacturing development, engineering. So overall, we've, we've done the indeed, and we've got probably about a 50 mix as far as salaried employees from the local area that I've worked with in the past and outside of the Holland area as well. So as far as hourly employees, we're a wide range from Grand Rapids to Allegan and a little south of Allegan. So we're seeing quite a wide range of employees that we're currently employing. So, yep.
Any other discussion?
And just add a few things. Right now, our battery remanufacturing process, we are the largest in the world that's currently in this business. So this business is going to grow over the next 20 years, basically. And, and the process of it is we're taking vehicle batteries with warranty issues, anything that's in the field, we're remanufacturing those. We can reuse part of those components. So in terms of a life cycle with a battery and the green process and what we're trying to establish, it's a full circle process. So from the original manufacturing, we can repurpose, we can rebuild and repair. And then we're also in the, in the process of developing a recycling operation as well. That's a big process with EV batteries that 20 years ago, 15 years ago, nobody was really thinking about what we were gonna do with all these batteries. ATC is in the business of resolving those issues going forward. So we're looking at a big growth spurt with ATC over the next 10 years.
Yeah. Mr. Byrd?
Congratulations. Thank you. My question is, so currently, we have not just EV, right? We have lawn equipment. And I'm speaking mostly of lawn equipment. Yes. Do you guys see any movement in that direction as well? We do. And we are currently having discussions with customers about multiple applications, whether it's vehicles, lawn equipment, we've talked, bus, busing is another big one, which is going, obviously. Canada's a big one for busing, electric busing. So there's a lot of different applications that we're looking at. So, yeah, it's, it's pretty much anything on a large scale, we're, we're actually in the, in, in the process of reviewing and deciding if we can remanufacture or repurpose those batteries. Okay. Thank you very much. You bet.
Any other discussion? Great. Thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you for your time.
All right. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Soul?
Yes.
Schultheis?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rowan?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 7E, Community and Neighborhood Services Uniform Color Company PA 198 tax abatement request. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Myers, and another great company that has a history here in the city.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you again, Mayor and council. Yes, next up is Uniform Color. They've applied for a new IFT for their facility at 942 Brooks Avenue. Uniform Color is a producer of high-performance color, and this is a new word for me, but additive master batch. And I think I'm gonna ask the company president to better define that. I think I know what it is, but better to ask him. They work in the automotive, furniture, building material, consumer, and packaging industries. This is a significant project with over $5 million of real property investment. They're proposing to build a 25-square-foot addition onto their existing facility. They also have a great deal of personal property and machinery. And with that, it's actually a 12, pardon me? 25,000, sorry. My apologies. I've done this for a while too, Mayor, but I still stumble over my words, right? But with personal property, it's a $12 million project, projected to add 13 new jobs and retain 192 jobs. So very large employer for our city. The term of the abatement would be 12 years. One thing I'd like to note, Keith, if you can scroll to the quick facts, Keith and I haven't talked about it because I just identified this, but originally, the company applied and only had two years left on their lease. And they leased from, they're not in a spec building, they leased from another company, a parent company. So assessing did a two-year review, and these are the numbers that are reflected in the attachment. But since talking to the company, they did a new lease at 12 years. So it will be a 12-year abatement. So that chart should indicate 12 years. And instead of the dollar figures you see there at 36,000 for the city incentive and 105,000 for other taxing units, those numbers should be closer to 200,000 and about 560,000. So because it's a difference between two years and 12 years of abatement. So apologies for that. When it was revised, I didn't proof the revision. I proofed the, the first draft. So just want to clarify that. So everybody is clear. And with that, we have Joe Anderson, President of Uniform Color, to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Any, any questions for staff or the applicant at this time? No, I think we're good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Yep.
Can I go ahead?
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Yes, please.
The lights aren't on, but I'll try to stick to five minutes. So.
Wait, you're, you're not, you're not required to go limited five minutes, but we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it, too. Mayor, council, thank you for your time today. I'm Joe Anderson, the President of Uniform Color. Uniform Color's been a part of the Holland community for 43 years. We are a colored master batch company. And what that is, is in your vehicles, the Yetis that you buy, your kayaks that you buy, anything plastic that's colorful, we create that. So what we do is, is those products are made by a natural plastic, could be multiple different polymers. And we make 2% to 4% of that in a colored master batch. So, you know, one of our most exciting new customers. So we're in 80% of the vehicles out there today. So any plastic part in your vehicle, most likely we color. Outside of that, exciting new customers like Yeti. Yeti was just in here with their corporate leadership two weeks ago. If any of your family, maybe young boys, use Axe spray, wear that colorant as well, head and shoulders bottles. We're in, we are the leader in local automotive and local furniture for all of our local color suppliers. All of our local automotive suppliers, we're also their lead color supplier. So heavily invested in the community. This is a project which actually, so we've grown since we started here 43 years ago. We have an equivalent-sized facility now in Monterrey, Mexico, and in Slovakia in Europe. We're also expanding into Asia as well. But Holland is our home. Holland is our headquarters, and that's where we want to double the size of our business. We're on track to double the size of our business in the next five years. So really exciting time. And the most important thing for us is the people in the community, and that we can continue to grow the, our employee and our employment base there. And we'll be looking to hire not only manufacturing, because, because in this building, we'll be adding two large extruders. That's how we make the plastic. So they'll be running that, but also colorist, engineers, chemists to help develop and continue to grow, as well as additional salespeople. So we're very excited and, and thank you for your time and your consideration today.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yep. I'll now open a public hearing on item 7E, Uniform Color Company PA 198 tax abatement request. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council in regard to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item 7E?
Motion approve item 7E.
Moved by Corbin. Is there support? Support by Schultheis. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay. Rowan?
Yes.
Schultheis?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item 7F, Community and Neighborhood Services, AMK Holdings LLC request to approve brownfield plan for 493 West 32nd Street. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm gonna have Mark come up here one more time. I'm really excited about this project because it's in my neighborhood, and this is the first step of a multi-step proj, um, project to not only kind of address a problem that we have, but also kind of an exciting future that we have here. So he'll give the larger context and explain why I'm excited about this one.
Thank you, Keith, and thank you again, Mayor and council. Yes, this is an exciting project. And just a little anecdote, this is a property that when I was getting a tour from Keith, when I came here, we ended up turning around in this parking lot. And I said, what, what is this vacant bombed-out building? And here we are just months later, and it's gonna be redeveloped, and it's gonna be housing, including affordable housing. So very excited about this project. So AMK Holdings LLC, they are out of Saline, Michigan, is proposing to redevelop the property at 493 West 32nd Street into a residential community. They're still fleshing out just what the housing's gonna look like. We don't have site plans yet and so forth. But they're looking at five new buildings, 25 total housing units. And a portion of those units will be targeted for households earning less than 80% area median income, or AMI, so affordable housing. The site is 3.57 acres. It has, again, a vacant facility, about 30,000 square feet. It's been vacant since 2022, previously being a nursing home or senior living facility. Most recently, it's become quite an attractive nuisance. And in fact, we had to cite the new owner who just closed down the property in May. We had to cite them because people were breaking in. It was open and exposed. And so they're very anxious to demolish the building to get rid of the blight and, and the nuisance. So under the Brownfield Act, it is eligible property deemed functionally obsolete by the city assessor. So it's not contaminated, but it is obsolete based on its state and condition. Eligible activities that can be financed through the tax increment financing includes asbestos abatement, demolition of the existing structure, due diligence, and so forth. The IFT capture would be for approximately nine years. reimbursable expenses to the developer are approximately $304,000. An equal amount would be captured and put in the city's local brownfield redevelopment fund. And then also, an administrative fee of $34,000 would come to the city from the TIF capture to administer the brownfield. Again, this project would eliminate Again, this project would eliminate blight, it would increase property values, and importantly, it'll provide additional housing and, and a portion of affordable housing. It should be noted, like if you recall the project on Ottawa Avenue, the developer has inquired about a housing TIF. Now that we have those standards in place, they will, in the near future, once they develop the scope of the housing further, likely amend this and come back for a housing TIF. This project did go to, before the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority at their meeting of September eleven, and they passed a resolution recommending, or approving the plan and recommending approval by city council. And with that, we do have Logan Mulholland from Fishbeck, here, a consulting firm working on the brownfield on behalf of the owner, and she's here to answer any questions she might have.
Any questions from council? Yes, Ms. Rowan.
I don't have a question, just a comment. Just familiar with that property, and it is an awful blight. It is, I used to have a client that was in that nursing home, so I can only think that it's going to be good karma to bring a new, higher use for that property. And so, I think you can't demolish it fast enough. So, kudos to you and best of luck with the project. I hope that it provides, you know, something positive for that site, and provides new housing for individuals who, you know, and fills a need for our community. So, I look forward to hearing more in the future. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council? Mr. Freeman?
Just saying, a ditto of expanding the inventory of housing and developing in that area. So, thank you so much.
Any other questions, comments from council members? I, I just have a clarification question because I know the folks are going to be, are listening and going to be asking. There will be multiple steps and approvals before there's actually housing built on that. We don't have a site plan yet. We don't have actual plans for what the housing is going to look like, but all of that's going to have to come before planning commission and other bodies potentially before that gets approved, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. We just want to make sure of that. Wonderful. Thank you. Do need to do a public hearing on this item as well. So, I'll open a public hearing on item seven F, AMK Holdings LLC, a request to approve a brownfield plan for four ninety-three West Thirty-second Street. Does any member of the public like to address council in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council in regard to item seven F?
Moved to approve?
Moved by Raymond. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay. I don't think we've gotten around this far before that Michael's the first, first one. Lots of roll calls. Okay. Schulteis?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to speak to us in person during our, our public meetings, we do also provide an email address where you can send an email that will be received by all council members. We review those between our regular meetings and accept them into the record at the regular meetings. We don't read them out loud during the meetings, but we do accept them as part of the public record. That email address is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Once again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We do not have any this week, but we do like to let you know about that. Next item on the agenda, item twelve, Echo four point one Holland BPW Insurance Program. Mr. Van Beek?
I love that the mayor, if you've noticed, he always, he only uses the Echo for the E, because I'm not sure he knows, you know, the other, the other ones.
I, I only use it for item twelve, Echo. I don't use it in any other, any other item.
But I digress. I want to start this off with just extending my appreciation, not only to our consultant, who will be introduced here momentarily, but especially to Lynn McHammond, and to Dave Koster and Dave's team. This is another one of those examples where the city and the Board of Public Works were the same, and yet we're not, in a lot of ways. And this is a great partnership between those two entities. We have a very good insurance program, and I'll let our consultant kind of explain that PowerPoint slide here in a bit. But we are always working the edges and making sure that we're getting the, the best value for the dollars that we spend. And that means sometimes they have to go through Lynn and Dave and staff to answer a lot of questions and make sure that we're analyzing things and challenging and, and again, getting the best value for the dollar. And I think tonight, you're going to see another example of us going through that, and quite frankly, a very complicated system of the insurances that we need for the city. So, with that, I'm going to ask Lynn to come up, but I wanted to make sure I thanked her before she even got up here. So, thanks, Lynn.
Thanks, Keith. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. Tonight, I'm here to present the proposed combined city and Board of Public Works insurance program that begins November first, twenty twenty-four, all the way through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And it is a program that covers our property, our liability, auto, workers' compensation, and cyber insurance, as well as pollution for the Board of Public Works. So, we work with Marsh USA, who was selected in twenty twenty-two for a three-year agreement after completing a request for proposal for our insurance agent of Record Services. This is the third year we are working with them. And tonight, John Hurley from Marsh has joined us, and he will, in a few moments, kind of go over the insurance market, so we can see what's driving our increases, or actually, we had some decreases, and kind of go over any, little bit of the process that we go through each year, and answer any questions that you might have. But before I turn it over to him, I did kind of want to highlight some of the numbers, how it looks on our financials bar this year. And so, we have this complicated chart in your packet. Yep. And so, this evening, we can see that the total program presented is in the recommendation not to exceed two million one hundred thirty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars. And I say to not, not to exceed because as we still work through our date till November first, the representative of Marsh has indicated that our excess liability carriers are still trying to sharpen their pencils, and we might get a little bit better news. So, which is good news, always. But some of the biggest drivers for that, it represents an increase of a hundred fifty-eight thousand three hundred ten dollars, or just eight percent from prior year, which is actually not too bad, given some of the other things that have gone on, which we hear hurricanes and so forth, really have been driving some of those markets, especially in property, and then excess liability. So, those are actually the biggest drivers, excess liability. And again, that's why I said they're still working on seeing if we can get some of those rates down a little bit. We essentially have proposed, with the exception of cyber insurance, to keep our coverage the same as prior years, which is good. And so, the other item that has driven the increase for this year overall is a little bit of the property. But we have to remember, we actually added a fire station and the biodigester. So, as those projects get more towards completion, those increase our property insurance as well. So, we feel like the rate, even though it shows an increase, a lot of that is still driven by just the fact of the property values that we added. So, some good news, cyber. So, we've, just a couple of years ago, actually, cybersecurity, the Board of Public Works could only even get one person to actually offer a premium for them. And the city, we had to kind of take what we could get. So, I think our limit was like two million dollars in liability, and we paid about what we're paying, what's proposed now. So, this year, the, the market has stabilized. We, when we go through this process, our IT departments on both of the board and the city have to fill out questionnaire after questionnaire after questionnaire. But that's great because we have to prove we're actually taking a lot of steps to increase our security here. So, those factors have both come in and impacted us this year by getting, we have more options to choose from, and the options we have, we could increase our coverage, live, you know, our coverage maximum, and for, and get a lower deductible even, and have the same price that we paid last year. So, that was good news. We went from a two million dollar to a five million dollar maximum. So, that is great news in this proposed coverage. So, before I turn it over, there was one other thing I wanted to just kind of highlight. Last year, when I was here presenting, was the first year we had a separate breakout policy for inland marine. And the question came up, what is inland marine? And I kind of knew what it was, but I didn't have a very good explanation. So, tonight, why is it called inland marine insurance? Our folks at Google say, "In the sixteen hundreds, cargo was transported by water. So, marine insurance covered businesses from sea losses. As cargo began to move over land, insurance companies started to cover those goods under the same policy. So, inland was added to the name." So, as far as I can tell, now we have, when our equipment like backhoes and stuff move from place to place, they're covered. So, in case you wanted to know. So, finally, as a reminder, in our big overall thing that you saw in the packet, we have the BPW energy generation assets are covered under separate policy. And so, we, those are not part of this program, just because of the uniqueness of those assets. So, I will turn it over to John to give you a little bit more explanation about the process and Marsh. And then Dave Koster's here, and John and I will be here to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Lynn.
John?
Thanks.
Welcome, John. And, and kudos, anybody who can survive a meeting with Lynn McHammond and Dave Koster deserves a real tip of the hat. You're amazing.
Well, you're, you're kind, you're kind to have me here tonight. Usually, insurance people get, you know, things thrown at them at meetings, but it's okay. So, thanks for, for letting me come in. I'm John Hurley. Been with Marsh many, many years. I live on the east side of the state in Gross Point, but I love visiting Holland. So, it's great to be here. Yeah, Lynn is, and, and Dave are constant support, and almost the only ones left in the room. But we, you do have a very complex program, but I have to hand it to you. I mean, this is my first year working directly on the account. I was involved with the Energy Center years ago, but, and public entities through most of my career. So, you, you have a complex program, but it's really a very, very good program, especially as a, somebody coming in who handles other public entities. And I see your program, it's quite impressive. And I think it speaks to your professionalism and, and the beauty of your community and, and how you run it. So, that's just my editorial comment. So, Lynn hit, hit on a lot of great points. I think the, the big highlight, while it's not a huge dollar amount, is the extra limit for cyber, which is fantastic. You can now go from two million to five million. And actually, municipalities and utilities are very vulnerable these days to cyber attacks. You probably read about it, don't want to read about it, but it's all bad news. But, you know, this protects you from infiltration of your network. It protects you from the theft of personal identification information, people's names and numbers, and also protects you from extortion. So, those claims are escalating dramatically. There was a very large water system that was hacked recently. And anyhow, I think that's great. You can do that. In general, the insurance industry, and you may, some of you may be in the profession yourself, so correct me if you hear otherwise, but the insurance industry is still really limping along because there've been just so many claims hitting the industry from all fronts. You probably mostly hear about the hurricanes and the tornadoes and the hail damage and the floods. And even though those are property issues, they still hit the same insurers that pay liability issues. So, insurer may be paying out hundreds of millions on a property claim, and they may be paying out fifty million on a liability claim, but it all adds up. And the industry is really pretty upside down as far as profitability. They're not at the profitability levels they need to be to reduce rates dramatically. What we've started to see in the third quarter, and if I have a five-minute limit, tell me, in the third quarter, we're beginning to see some flattening of pricing, or instead of having twenty percent increases, increases are less than that, you know, five, ten, twenty percent. So, you have a very complex program that's led out of Lloyds in London, some very good, strong syndicates there, very well-known. The fact that you have this package policy that combines many coverages from liability, auto, property, law enforcement, sexual harassment, that is, is great to have. I know a lot of clients who don't have that kind of coverage. And I can also say your retentions are very attractive. I think it's approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the liability side. Cities and counties that have a more challenging environment have retentions in the millions, or cannot even buy coverage until x of five million. So, I think you're in a very good place, coming from the outside looking in. We did, we do have some increases in the liability, but as Lynn was saying, the numbers are starting to get a little bit better. The excess liability, we were very worried. It was going to be in the twenty percent range, and that's what the first indications came in, twenty percent increase. Wow, that's an awful lot. But when we kind of did our homework six months ago, and we're looking at conditions, we thought it could be as bad as twenty-five. As of this week, it's not going to be twenty percent. It's going to be probably under ten percent increase, which would be good. It's going to save, save us some money. I, I don't have it all in writing yet, but the indications that were coming in is we're going to be less than ten percent increase on the excess liability. Pardon me? Okay. What else can I tell you? I think you have, you know, the nice thing about your package is it also is a five, your primary liability program, it's a five million dollar limit, which is fantastic. Some markets only offer a one or two million aggregate limit. So, the fact that your primary carrier, Ambridge, out of Lloyds, is giving you a five million limit right away, before we have to buy the excess, I think is very valuable for you. And the premiums, I know it's a lot of money. I always deliver bad news, but I think on the whole, you know, we benchmark you against your peers, and you're looking very good at your, at your retentions and your limits and your pricing. You have a significant auto exposure fleet of very important vehicles, and I know your loss history is fantastic. So, you, a lot of clients say, "We don't have any losses. Why, why are we paying this premium?" And unfortunately, you're sort of banking the premium for maybe an unexpected event where you are going to have a claim. And, you know, accidents, no matter how safe you are, and how astute your employees are, and how alert your drivers are, and how professional everybody is, accidents are going to happen. And we don't want them to happen, but if they do, I think, you know, your, your limits are good. You have a twenty million dollar limit for liability. That includes defense cost coverage for you. So, unfortunately, with, when a claim does happen, speaking of, you know, some bodily injury, the plaintiff lawyers, they come out of the woodwork, and they, even though it might not be your fault directly, they drag you into it because it might be on your premises, it might be on your road. They may claim some issue with traffic signals, or they may just, you know, come after you. So, at least we have the coverage. But with inflation, socioeconomic issues, and just a heightened plaintiff's bar, everybody's very vulnerable. So, it's a, it's a difficult situation. And I'm sure Vince could elaborate on that more specifically. What more can I tell you, other than that Lynn and Dave have done an outstanding job?
Questions? Mr. Freeman?
I have two, and I'm not sure who, who to direct it to, so I'll let you guys fight it out. I'm questioning our liability on fiber, and when we established our rates, are we in a good place that we've established our rates to make that still true? Does that make sense?
That might be a Dave.
Like, we're at a forty-five dollar applicat, or a, a month, and we've made our rates kind of, I would assume, on anticipation of costs of all those different things.
That's not necessarily an insurance loss issue. That would be more of a business risk issue in terms of like take rate or things like that. But that's not really the insurable product. As far as like property here would be something if there was a major, you know, tornado that rolled through and took out all the fiber. Then, the schedule values are that we've got the ability that our fiber and other electric assets would be in those scheduled values, so we could actually see that as an insured loss and get recovery from the property insurance. But in terms of whether or not the price point is right, that's more kind of a business risk decision, I, I guess, Tim. I'm trying, maybe I'm not getting the question correctly on that.
I'm just checking if our cost estimate, estimates... I'm just checking if our cost estimate estimates that we created a rate for fiber back here with a increase now for fiber to insure it.
So I'm.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
My guess would, so what, when we did budget, for example, we had expected, and I don't know exactly what the board used, but we used a 10% increase because of the marketplace recently. So I'm sure Chuck did the same. So those rates would have been factored in with the 10%. So the fact that we're at 8% gives us even a little wiggle room.
I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification. That helps out a lot. Yes, I would concur with that. We have seen, you know, a trend line and sort of planned on that. And I would say also, if you look at the pro forma, the insurance portion of the cost of service for fiber is a relatively small piece of that. So even if there's fluctuation in that, it's not the vast majority of what goes into the, that element. Thank you.
Great answer. Thank you. And then the continuation of the, under the graph, there was a under pollution and there was a 20 million under Hamilton. Can we unpack that a minute?
Sure. So you have a, for environmental liability, in the event you spill something and have to clean it up, or the EPA asks you to clean it up, or imposes fines or penalties, you have a $20 million limit with an insurer called Hamilton. And a good insurer, yeah, good name, Hamilton?
Well, it's just, thank you for clarifying. That cleared it up right there. Because we have a community that's right next to us, Hamilton, and I'm like, what?
Yeah. Now, Hamilton's a good, very good insurer.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Schulteis?
Probably a process question that I don't yet understand. On the action request form, it says it's NA for budget. And I was trying to reconcile, is this the amount that we had anticipated for insurance?
Is the dollar amount?
Yes.
So yeah, so as I indicated, so when we go through budget, obviously, we don't know what it's going to come in. So we kind of look at our last few years and then also check in to see what, we check in with Marsh actually to check in to see what they're expecting or anticipating. And so I believe we did go 10% to be conservative. So all our budgets have 10%. So this 8% increase is actually well within that. Now, from a process question, had it come in 20% overall, we would have then had to come back and propose a mid-year budget and adjust all of our budgets accordingly and make sure we had the funding to do that. But fortunately, this year, an 8% is, is within what we had budgeted for this year's program.
Yeah, and I think it's going to come down.
Yeah.
Significant, you know, come down closer to five.
Can you, can you come closer to the microphone when you say that?
This is recorded, I imagine. So, yeah. We're keeping, driving down, we still have time to do that, so.
See, and I put that out there.
He's feeling like he's still in the meeting with us.
Right. As I heard that, I put it out there so we'd all hear it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Mr. Corbin?
You mentioned cyber insurance, which is great because it's been difficult over the past few years to really lock into that and get insurance companies to lock into it. One question I have is regarding state-sponsored activity of cyber. Is this covering state-sponsored or is it just the random acts of?
No, it could be, it could be a state-sponsored intrusion. The only thing we don't cover, and it's been your choice, I believe, not to cover, is terrorism. But I have not yet, well.
Do they, do they, they call that then state-sponsored?
That's, that's a good.
Is that exclusion only on the property, though, John, or is that on the cyber also?
Generally, we do not, no one covers terrorism. Unless you want.
We, I'm serious about the microphone because people, people at home will want to hear you.
Yeah. No, I'm sorry. So with respect to terrorism, every coverage excludes terrorism because the insurers are just not in a financial position to pay a massive terrorism claim or incident. The remedy for that is that the US government set up TRIA. It's a Terrorism Risk Insurance Act in 2002 that was established where if you want to pay into that fund, you can, so that if there are funds available from the government in the event of a terrorist act, you can claim them. Some municipalities, cities, corporations, private, public elect to buy the terrorism coverage. Many reject to buy it because they believe if there's going to be a terror event, it's going to be a bad situation and they're probably never going to get the coverage from the government anyhow. So a state act, as you say, for cyber, I might have to do a little more homework on that to see if it would, I have not yet heard of an incident where the government has declared such an act as an act of terror. If you have a foreign state that infiltrates your software, I'm confident that will be covered.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've, we've thought of that and made a recommendation many times to exclude that. And I think one of the other reasons is, how many times has terrorism been declared? Right? It's so infrequent, and when it does, you know, thinking back to a 9/11 sort of event, a lot of funds rolled to those particular areas that were directly affected by that through federal appropriations as well, dealing with that specific event versus, you know, knowing that this just doesn't happen, you know, that often. So the idea that, you know, we should add this to the coverage, you know, we've made the, kind of the reasoning that it is probably not prudent to recommend that.
I just have one question. If you can go to the slide that has the vertical and horizontal bar graphs, under the workers' compensation section, that's the only one I don't get. Why the spikes at the top of the bar graph?
Very good question. Thank you for picking that up. The spikes are there because there's not a specified limit, like there's not a maximum limit on work comp unless it is so dictated by the state of Michigan. So unfortunately, if you lost a finger or you lose an eye in the workplace, there's sort of a stated amount that you'll be given. But if you have to go on disability, permanent or permanent, those wages are not capped. So there's no limit. That's why. Great. Keeps going up.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you, all three of you. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Hope to come back sometime.
Yes. We'd love to have you. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to item 12, Echo 4.1?
Move to approve.
Moved by Freeman is their support.
Support.
Support by Sol. Any discussion? Seeing none. Brenda, would you please call a roll?
Byrd.
Yes.
Reiman.
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Sol?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Schulteis?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, 12, Echo 6.1, gifts. Brenda, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gift, a total of $7,615 in donations collected from the 2024 Battle of the Badges charity softball game held in September 2024. The monies will be presented to Holland Public Schools Athletic Hardship Fund as the charity selected this year. It is recommended these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to the donors.
Wonderful. Thank you. What is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve said gifts with a token of our appreciation.
Moved by Sol is their support.
Support.
Support by Raymond. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, item 13, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek?
Mr. Mayor, counsel? Just a few things, and I promise I will go fast. First, I think everyone appreciates how we handle consent agenda items, but sometimes I always like to circle back and just maybe for everyone, point out a few things that I think are particularly beneficial or really appreciate staff for doing that. I think we had no less than three different grants that we were pursuing in some really cool areas. I know Brenda, from a clerk perspective, just kind of went out and found some, and Connie's supporting her there. We have Andy Kenyon. We're really excited about the application where we, we use a grant amount and combine it with our capital improvement funds. And then a lot of times we get participation with a local playground provider. And I guess we decided one playground this year wasn't enough, so we're going after two in Holland Heights and Water Tower. So just appreciation to our staff for always looking at those types of things. And thank you for supporting the position that we have with Connie to really continue to be aggressive in those areas. You did see, you're thankful that I didn't go through and present everything in our first quarter business strategic plan report, but hopefully you take a look at that. We have been busy and appreciate the staff making progress in a lot of different areas. Meeting schedule just coming up. We will have a study session next week. Topic is really just several years after our pilot and then our adoption of our short-term rental regulation, just unpacking that a little bit and giving a report. And then we have a week off with a fifth Wednesday. And then remember both November and December, just the way things fall, we'll only have one study session in each of those months. A particular, there's always things going on, so I always hesitate to call specific days out, but I think the public particularly will be excited. Our Waverly Fire Station is open and we are having a open house. And I think they'd really be pleased to see that investment that we've made, not only in the community and the safety of our citizens, but also in our firefighters. So that is on Tuesday night, October 29, from 5:30 to 8:00. Please be sure, don't enter the fire station on Waverly. That's where the trucks will have to roll out of, and they don't want to have to hit your car. Enter the parking spaces and the parking lots off of 32nd Street, please. Ambassador Academy continues. We are now six weeks through. We have four left. Make sure if you're able in particular to make that last night the graduation night. There might be someone in the back that's part of the Ambassador Academy, and I think overall, it's been very enjoyable, hopefully for the participants. One of the fantastic things that I'm really enjoying is seeing us go around week by week and how much our staff, and not just the department directors, we're kind of getting everyone involved, is really enjoying bragging about what they do and have people that are interested in what they do. So that's been very enjoyable. And then I will just add, but won't talk about it, because I think the mayor is going to recognize a very cool night and two recognitions that actually the city got at the Latin Americans United for Progress Laup Gala on Friday night. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 14, appointments and communications from the mayor. I do have a proclamation this evening in regard to Extra Mile Day. Whereas Holland, Michigan is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Holland, Michigan is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Holland, Michigan is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Holland, Michigan acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2024. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2024, Extra Mile Day. I urge everyone in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, the 16th day of October, 2024, Mayor Nathan Box. And I do have a couple of things. It seems odd in mid-October to say this, but this is our last regular meeting before Election Day. And Brenda, I know that you and your staff are very busy and have a very busy Election Day coming up. We are always very proud of you and all of the folks that do the great work that's coming up. Good luck. We are all rooting for you. I know that early voting start, early in-person voting starts in just a few days, so you've got some very busy days and very long days coming up. We know that you guys are going to do a great job with that. And we, we know that all of you are incredibly dedicated to making sure that the elections run smoothly and fairly, and everybody that should vote, does vote, and, and does that well. So thank you for that, and we will see you after Election Day. And as Mr. Van Beek alluded to, the city of Holland and downtown Holland each received an award on Friday night at the Latin Americans United for Progress Gala. This seems like it's gala and celebration season in the city of Holland. There are many of these between Labor Day and Thanksgiving, and this is one of my favorites every single year. Latin Americans United for Progress is an organization that's been around for 60 years, and their gala every year is one of my favorites. Lots of energy, lots of vibrancy, hundreds of people gathered at the Civic Center. And they presented two awards this year, their partnership awards. One to the city of Holland for the city of Holland's partnership with them to help promote and facilitate activities that the city of Holland has, that Laup has with the city of Holland, specifically mentioning Esther Fafilsky and the Human Relations Commission, and calling out our own Matt Van Dyken and Keith Van Beek, and saying specifically, hey, we've got Matt and Keith on speed dial, and every time we call, they answer and they help. And I think it is a great testament to our city employees that an organization that represents 25 to 30% of the population of the city of Holland believes in their city so much and their city organization so much that they are willing to recognize the city, their city government, as an incredible partner in this community. I think that's fabulous. Congratulations to both of you, to all of the city employees, to Esther, for being a great partner in this community. That's one of the things we talk about a lot, but it's nice to have that recognition in the community that they see that we want to be a partner and that we are a partner in the community. And the second partner award, equally proud of that, was downtown Holland. And Cara de Alvera and, and her team was also recognized by Laup for working with them to engage the downtown area with Laup and Latin Americans and making sure that there are activities. And lots of things going on in downtown Holland for the Latin American community as well. Again, a great night highlighting what the city of Holland and downtown Holland is doing to engage all members of this community. One of my guiding statements is empower talented people to do their best work. And I think that Friday night was a great example of talented people being empowered to do their best work in the community and that bearing fruit. Our Human Relations Commission has been around since 1966. They have been working with all sectors of this community. That bore fruit, tangible fruit, on Friday night. Our downtown group made a concerted effort. They recognized that the Latino community in this community did not necessarily feel welcome, did not necessarily feel engaged in the downtown, so they made a concerted effort to reach out and to work with them, and that bore fruit on Friday night. And that will continue to bear fruit for years and years and years to come. So congratulations to all of the great members of the city staff and for downtown Holland for that great award, and more importantly, for the great work that they're doing as partners in this community. And that is all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, item 15, appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Anything from council members this evening? Then there is just one more motion I would entertain this evening.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Freeman is their support.
Support.
Support by Byrd. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you all.